Okay, I like.
Like to call this meeting to order. Board of Commissions special called Work Session September the 8th. At this time, I'll call on City Manager Nate Pagan to talk to us about electric scooters.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and welcome to Work Session. It's been awhile, so it's good to be back in a little bit more of a normal order. Several months ago, Commissioner Sanford was contacted by a local individual who was interested in the possibility of offering electric scooters or e-scooters in our community. I spoke with him then, and I think it wasn't the right time, but more recently, he contacted Commissioner Sanford again. And I've spoken to Nick Tharp once or twice, more recently, about his desire to bring electric or e-scooters to our community. So Nick is here to provide you a presentation with what that would entail. And then when he's done, Leland has kind of a quick summary of some research the staff has done regarding scooters as well. So with that, Nick?
Nick?
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nick Tharp. Address is 506 West 15th Street, Owensboro, Kentucky, 42301.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Nick Tharp. That's my wife, Jana Tharp. So I'm not a speaker by any means, so. So yeah, I reached out to actually Jeff probably last year at some point about the Bird scooters, which are electric scooters. And it actually, we never got to this point at the time because whenever I looked into the insurance at that time, they wanted $50,000 a year. And I didn't think that that was going to be possible. So we kinda brushed it under, and I got a phone call probably three months ago, maybe, two months ago, from Bird again. And they came up with a new program due to high insurance rates and stuff, kind of worldwide. And they put together a deal to where they cover the insurance. Obviously, they get a certain percentage of the, you know, the rides, but they kinda take care of the insurance part. So with that being said, I kinda reached back out to Jeff, and he, I guess, maybe talked to somebody and got me in today to see what your thoughts were. And I didn't want to just go out and, you know, start this thing because I didn't want scooters all over the road and all that with nobody knowing. So, and then I think there's a couple, the green belt and stuff, that, you know, might need to be discussed amongst you all about these as well. So I don't know if, I mean, if you guys have been to St. Louis or Nashville and stuff, most of you guys have probably seen these. They're cool, I guess, you know, something to do. That's kinda the way me and her looked at them when we first rode them in St. Louis. We enjoyed them, and that's actually what gave us the idea, you know, Owensboro, right? So we're both residents here. I've been here all my life, you know? So we, we both, she's a Realtor, I own my own business doing remodeling. We're always looking ways to help the community and try to get some stuff out there, so. I think they gave you all a couple papers here. It's just kind of an overview. First one, literally kinda what is Bird? Just kinda goes through the, you know, solving the last mile problem. Basically, kinda like downtown, downtown is pretty well the, my main focus of bringing these, you know, we just spend all that money down there, got that looking good. Tons of people down there every day. So I think the scooters between the colleges and downtown, you know, something for people to do. Also, you know, connecting people to other, you know, small businesses downtown as well. So, and then of course, you know, it reduces the CO2 and emissions and all that by getting people out of cars, on the streets, in the scooters. You know, and it's just, they're fun, like I said. I mean, it's something to do for people, tourists and stuff. I know we have a lot of ball tournaments. These scooters can be easily moved to designated areas. So if there's an event going on, you know, like the boat races, for example, you know, we could have had them down there. Or if there's a football game going on at KWC, we could have taken some there, you know? So we could play some wherever. Then it goes into kinda how it works. Smartphones, everything's kind of on smartphone. We have some stuff, obviously, on our side that's different, but pretty much everything is through a smartphone for them, for the user. Turns them on and off, they pay on the smartphone, all that stuff. They actually have it now, too, to where you can actually text message. So people that don't have a smartphone, that just have a regular phone, you can actually now turn on and off the scooters with your, just a text message. That's kind of a new feature they just came out with. Then it talks about safety. Talks, like I said, you kinda read through all this kind of briefly, but again, kinda like I mentioned, it connects businesses. And again, you know, downtown is kind of where I thought these would work really well. But, and then it connects people to transit systems also, you know, people that may not be able to afford cars, that need to get to the bus station or something like that, they can, you know, for a couple bucks, they can hop on one of these and get to where they need to go. College students, too, you know, classes and all that stuff. Maybe they live a couple blocks down, they can hop on one of these, get to class, go back and forth, go get something to eat, you know, whatever. So, and it talks about a little bit of money there, but that's not really comparable to Owensboro, I don't think. We're looking at about 100 scooters starting out. And I know that may seem like a lot, but actually Owensboro is rated for 300 scooters, according to Bird's numbers. So, and I kinda, they wanted to start out 150, and actually, last year, we may have even been a little higher than that whenever we talked about it last year, but I talked them down to just starting out at 100, seeing how it goes, and going from there. So, and then, like I said, you flip it over here again, and there's, like, they, whenever you sign up for this, they have to agree to, you know, a whole list of stuff, that they're gonna, you know, stay off sidewalks, or, all that's customizable, though. So that's kinda what me and Jeff are talking about, and me and Nate as well, you know, kinda like the green belt, right? There's not supposed to be any motorized vehicles on the green belt. So if that doesn't change, we can actually set a no-ride zone on the green belt. So what that means is that if they're riding along and they hit that no-ride zone, it's gonna shut the scooter off. They can't, it won't work. There's also slow zones. So kinda what we talked about, too, maybe like, for example, Moreland Park. Not necessarily can't be there, but we're gonna reduce the speed. And we're gonna take it down to five mile an hour, three mile an hour, whatever. So as soon as they hit Moreland Park, it's gonna slow them down. Or that could be a no-ride zone, whatever. All that's customizable, and, you know, go from there. They do, they do, there's certain things that they kinda push, one of those being helmets. They recommend you wear a helmet, stuff like that, but no, they recommend that you don't park them on sidewalks, stuff like that. So, and again, the sidewalk, the parking thing, there's, the idea of Bird, like in St. Louis and stuff, is you kinda ride them where you want them, and then you get off them, and somebody else picks it up from where you left it off, and such and so forth. They do have some in-app applications that we can do, and they're called preferred parking areas. So let's say somebody parks it here, but the preferred parking area is over there, it's gonna try to get them to take it right there, you know? So there's, we can do that, too, as far as in-app. So, but like I said, I just, we, the main thing was, we thought it'd be something fun for Owensboro, something to do. Obviously, it's a, you know, for the city as well, it'd be a little more revenue. At this point, we're not really sure how much, because we don't know how it's gonna work, right? But, but I just didn't want to throw these things out on the, on the streets and somebody have an issue. So, I don't know if you guys have any questions, or?
What, how are you gonna charge for using them?
It's all in the app.
It's all in the app?
Yes, so they, like, they tie their credit card, debit card to the app, and then, and to do that. Now, I did mention the text message way you can do this now. I don't know, I haven't gotten the details on that. That is like fairly new within the last, like, couple weeks. So I haven't gotten the details on the text message deal, so I don't know if maybe they charge you for text messages or something. I'm not real sure about that part yet. But as far as the smartphone dashboard, yeah, you connect your credit card, debit card to that app, and it's all done through the app.
And is it done locally, or is that secure, or where do they actually do the charging?
The charge would be to Bird. Everything, everything is ran through Bird. That is correct, yep. And then they split the percentages, and then the percent, you know, my percentage comes to me. I have to manage the fleet of the Birds, and then I do the repairs, charging, all that stuff.
So helmets are only recommended?
I'm sorry?
Helmets are only recommended?
That's correct, and I'm sure that that may, it could be a requirement, but I don't know that, that would, I don't know how we would police that. Does that make sense? So like, I don't know how the app would know if you were wearing them.
Yeah, you don't have to ride, wear one with a motorcycle, so I just...
I'm just saying, you know, I don't know how the app would know to not turn it on or turn it off based on the helmet, yeah. Because it is, I mean, it's their own personal helmet that they recommend.
Alright, so you're not providing helmets, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Smith-Wright?
You kinda answered my question while you were talking then, because I wasn't sure whether you were wanting the city to, if this was just your idea, and you were wanting the city to provide the, you know, the motorcycle, I mean, scooters or whatever.
No.
But you answered that. But again, with the, with the helmet, if that's what they, that's what they require, and say, I'm just downtown, I don't know that I'm wanting to ride one of these things, and then I decide, and I don't have a helmet, so I can't ride, right?
Well, it's a recommended.
Okay.
Yes, it's a recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Yes. But as far as it, it's not gonna, this whole deal isn't gonna cost the city anything.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, we're providing, between myself and Bird, everything is taken care of. The, I just didn't want to, like I said, the reason for this is, we didn't want to throw these things out on the streets, and then you all come back to me. I'd rather it go the other way. I'd rather be turned down for, you know what I mean? I don't want to waste my time, and I don't want to waste anybody else's, so, yeah.
Jeff?
Nick, I just wanted to say that I appreciate someone your age, entrepreneur, you and your wife, with the idea, whether we do this or not.
Right.
Doing it the right way, instead of doing it the wrong way, and coming up here and explaining to us exactly what you want to do, to see if we could work it out, or we don't work it out. No matter how this goes down, I appreciate you being an entrepreneur in our community, and coming up here with some ideas to add something different. I think, I think that's great.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Do you know the, the average age of people? Do they give you all any kinda information like that, people that use them?
Yeah, so you're, the, when you sign up for the app, it has to be somebody 18 or older. Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm sure most of y'all have seen somebody less than 18, but somebody, whoever has that app tied to their name, has to be 18 or older.
Okay. I think you've answered quite a bit for me.
There's actually another packet here, too, and some of this stuff, you know, has to deal with more of, kinda with, on my side, but it did have a few pages in here, kind of related to that first introduction there, that you guys can read through as well, so.
Couple questions for you, please. I've seen the scooters in St. Louis, Nashville, different places like that. A couple of the issues that I've seen, though, is people, when they drop them off, they drop them off.
Right.
They're on the sidewalk, they're in the gutter, they're everywhere is where they are, and many times, it becomes a problem. And I even spoke to some of the police officers in downtown Nashville about it. And most of the time, they just don't like them, because they're everywhere. And they just, people aren't taking care of them, that is, the owners coming and get them, putting them up or anywhere else that they do. And I know Owensboro's not Nashville, but it's a matter of where do the people get trained to be able to put these on a consistent basis, because it can get really out of hand.
Right. So, so that, the, the Bird kind of, that's kind of the idea, because I know, like, on the green belt, there's those bicycles, and you pick them up at the bay there, and then you drop them off there as well. Bird is a little different, and you, wherever you find one, you can pick it up and ride it from point A to point B, and then that's where you leave it. Somebody else may come and pick one up. I did mention, though, that we can do recommended parking areas. And, and, and that's just, like I said, that's one of those things that, if we get this approved, that we could sit down, or I think maybe me and Nate, or me and Jeff, we even talked about, maybe even riding around with somebody and saying, you know, not here, not here, whatever, getting a map of Owensboro, marking off places, whatever we need to do there. But back to kind of people literally just dropping them, and they're laying over and stuff. Is there anything I can do about that? I mean, you know, people, if they're gonna tear something up, they're gonna tear it up, you know what I mean? So, now granted, we will be picking them up, charging them, all that stuff. If we, you know, if we're riding around and we see them, you know, there's, there's gonna be somebody, you know, doing this part-time anyways. Now, if we get 300 or so, then it'll be a full-time job for somebody, but, you know, starting out, to answer your question, I guess, is, you know, if people are gonna do that, they're gonna do it, you know what I mean? So I, I can't, they're not supposed to.
And then it's a matter, who picks up the pieces afterwards? Because you see them on a consistent basis, if somebody's not out there taking care of them, picking them up, doing whatever they're supposed to be doing, then they want to call you on your cell phone, come get these things.
Right.
Because they're on my sidewalk, in front of my business, house, whatever the case may be. So now, let's go to the, I guess, maybe the safety side, if we could?
Yep.
Riding these are not on the sidewalk, correct?
That is correct.
And so you don't, you ride them on the street?
That's correct.
Without a, and you don't have to have a driver's license?
That's correct.
Is there a la, age limit on who can ride them, or who cannot?
Well, that's whoever, whoever controls the app has to sign an agreement that they're 18 or older.
So they, if they, they get like six, is what they get? And it's a family, and they're putting 10 and 12-year-olds on there, that person is responsible for the children.
That's right.
That goes on there.
That is correct.
And the rules are, they have to be on the street riding this, not on the sidewalk?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Nate, did you say you had, did you have something else?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Thank you. You said that, that you could, you could drop it off, and then if somebody else came by, they could pick that one up that somebody else had dropped off. So how do, how do you know, like, if I, if I go into Kobe's to eat, and I drop, I mean, it's there, but I'm, I'm needing it to go back somewhere else, how do I know that somebody else is not gonna come by and pick that one up? You know what I'm saying?
You don't.
Big dog, big dog.
You don't.
Oh, okay.
That's kinda...
Put the big dog behind it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
The, the quantity, that's kinda where Bird pushes quantity, I think. That way, there's an abundance of them. But to answer your question in that scenario, is there's no guarantee that it will be?
Okay.
Hopefully, there'll be one close by, but, you know, that, that's kinda where they want their quantity to be large.
For the, if I don't mind saying, for the consumers, too, on your Bird app, you can track where other scooters are. So like, if you're at Kobe's, there might be one right around the corner, and you'll be able to see that, you could go get another one.
It'll show you like a red dot on your app.
You can see where all the scooters are, and so if you wanted to go get another one, you could find one on the app.
Okay. Did you say you had, Leland had something to share with us?
He did, so if you asked all your questions of Mr. Tharp, Leland kinda compiled a little bit from a legal perspective, because this is something, if we pursue, would require some changes to at least one or two ordinances potentially. So just wanted to introduce that concept as well.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. The gentleman has explained they have become quite popular. You see the scooters in most any large city that you go to, and sometimes they are laying on the sidewalks, sometimes they're set up on their stands. But they have become popular in Kentucky as well, Louisville, Lexington have them. They have ordinances and rules governing those. They're designed to be ridden on the highway, or the road, street, bike lanes, those types of things, and prohibited from city sidewalks, green belts, parks, those types of things. We have current ordinances to protect that. Ms. Rogers is one that would make, like to make sure as well, that we don't have those up in our parks, causing any issues. And we've got one current ordinance downtown that protects that Air Force Smothers Park. It actually starts at the north side of Third Street, runs to the river, and from Clay to Critten. But basically excludes bicycles, roller skates, skateboards, inline skates, those types of things. We're having a rash of vandalism, I'm not saying vandalism, but destruction down there, where they were grinding with their BMX bikes or the skateboards, and causing damage to a lot of the downtown and some of the park areas. So that's one that Steve and I have looked at, OPD and Amanda as well. We'll have to make an amendment there, if that's a path you all decide to go down. Some other things you need to take into consideration is, how many do we allow? What are those areas? Bird actually has some pretty neat features, so not only can we, by ordinance, ban them from the green belt in the parks, but you can actually set up those geo-fences, or those no-ride zones, to make sure that they don't operate within our parks, because the computer won't allow it to do that. So there's a lot of those things to take into consideration. OPD's done some research as well, Amanda, all of us, and we're happy to do that. As city staff, always looking for new revenues, and, you know, excited to work with businesses that are looking for, you know, to establish here in Owensboro, but there are a few rules and regulations we need to work through in order to do that.
Could I get an OPD opinion?
Yes, sir. One of our primary concerns is...
Might have to go to the mic, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. One of, one of our primary concerns is, you do have to be 16 years of age to operate, operate on them. That's obviously gonna be hard to control. I think when it comes to regulation on the stuff, and some of the problems that we'll have that comes up, are, as far as OPD's relationship with the community is important. And this could potentially be a pretty low-level offense that we would have to engage the public with. If there's 14, 15-year-olds riding the, riding the scooters, it could, could present problems. And, you know, as far as the helmet regulation, there's, they are not considered a motor vehicle, but they do have to be operated on the roadway 30 minutes before dark. They have to have a headlight and a taillight, so there could be some traffic regulation aspects that we have to, have to get involved with that. But we, we have some obvious concerns when it comes to the safety issue, particularly with people that probably shouldn't be riding them, and the regulations that we'd have to enforce on that, sir.
Can you give them a DUI on that thing?
DUI of a non-motor vehicle, sir. It's technically not considered a motor vehicle, so it won't fall under the specific KRS for, if you is DUI in a car, but there is another statute that covers DUI of non-motor vehicles, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Well, thank you for bringing that opportunity to us, and probably Commissioner Sanford and City Manager Nate Pagan will be back in touch with you, and...
Could I ask a question?
No, I've already closed the session. Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
I was just curious, I...
Get to the mic, so we can all...
You mentioned charging those in the evening. How long does the charging work? I mean, I presume you have different people that weigh different amounts, that use it a certain amount of, you know, how, how many hours typically will it last between a charge? And that was just a question that I had personally on that.
Yeah, so that's hard to gauge, kinda like you just mentioned, because of weight, incline, and whether you're, you know, wide open, or 50%, or, you know, so that, I actually asked that question about two weeks ago, to the gentleman, because of, you know, what I'm gonna be doing, you know, I'm the one that's gonna go get these, so how often and such? And that's what his answer was, is they don't really have a definite answer on that, just because of incline. You know, if you're riding it up in, you know, a hill the whole time, it's not gonna last near as long, obviously. So to answer that, I don't have that.
I didn't know if you needed a charging station, or something of that sort for...
No, everything actually will be, will be charged at our house, so. Yeah, and actually, there's separate batteries that we can change it, literally like, it's kinda like a DeWalt battery, you know? So, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith-Wright, you had something else?
Yes, I just want to ask the police officer something, and this doesn't have to do with the Bird, but it has to do with golf carts. I have lots of golf carts with young people in my neighborhood that are driving them around, and I've, I've just noticed this in the last month. And the other day, this child, I mean, she had to be 12, and, and she was having a problem, and I stopped and I said, "Are you having a problem?" And she says, "Well, I'm trying to get this thing to work." And I said, "Should you be driving that?" And she says, "My grandpa told me I could." So, but there's, there is not just that one, I've seen several in my neighborhood, so I know that's not legal.
Correct. It's, and that's, that is a problem, and it's kinda along the same lines of what we're thinking with the scooters, is it's, it's hard, and it's, each one of those, those are the low, low-level offenses that are quality of life issues, but at the same time, it puts an officer in a position to enforce a type of regulation that could impact, negatively impact the encounter with the citizen. And so we enforce those, we do the best we can to maintain them, but it's, it's, that's an obvious concern, it's something that's in the back of our mind, just with those, combating, combating that type of stuff. A lot of times, it's just family members aren't aware that it's illegal to do that. It's not anything that's intentional, but it, it does, does create problems, man.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Major Winkler. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to item 3, Northwest Revitalization. Abby Shelton, Community Development Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to present some of the proposed local fund project options for the Northwest NRSAs. As we've discussed over the past year, we are now moving to the northwest side of town with the revitalization efforts that community development does. And through the, through the next five years, we expect to invest over $3.8 million in federal funding within this area. And this is federal programming between home and CWG funds. So it is my understanding that you are willing to invest some local funding in this area as well, and this is, all of these slides are under the assumption that the total funding you would invest is $500,000. So the first program is a single-family rental housing grant or loan, $15,000 with a $15,000 match. They don't have to spend 15, but it will be up to 15, and they would match that. This would, if we use the entire fund to fund this, one of these programs, you could do up to 33 units, and this, this is only for single-family homes, which would equate to $500,000 in private investment. And if it is deemed a loan, if the property is sold, city recaptures a portion of funds to maintain a revolving loan fund. Next, we have a developer or homeowner grant or loan, and this example includes investor housing, or house flipping, to be sold or to be used, bought and used as primary residence. So this would be another $15,000 grant and/or loan, property matched for interior improvements. So this would be another $15,000 grant and/or loan, property matched for interior improvements. So we would do the exterior and they would pay for the interior. This could service up to 33 units and equate to $500,000 in private investment, of course. If it is a loan, city recaptures a portion of the funds if the house is sold. Another option is a developer or homeowner grant or loan, same as the previous slide. This takes into consideration a square foot subsidy, so possibly a $20 square foot subsidy, average size, and for a single-family home in that area is about 1,065 square feet. This would, could help 23 units and of course, if the property is sold, we could recapture. The next program is a developer homeowner grant or loan, up to $20,000 straight, interior and exterior work. And they would have, the property owner would match the interior improvements at 40% or $8,000. This would help up to 25 units and would produce $200,000 in private investment. Of course, we could put the... Yes, sir.
Ms. Shelton, could you... Is this another one of those things that has to go through about 1,500 different contracts to get done? Or is it pretty easy to do?
No, I will, I'll get to that in just a second.
Because that always concerns...
Right.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. So restriction on developer sales, this is obviously optional. And I will get to this part, the point that you made, Mayor. With the federal funding that I administer, we have to do a lot of restrictions on the properties. There's a lot of red tape and I would say that some of these programs would discourage anybody from investing and flipping a house because of all the paperwork that they would have to do through my programming. They would still have to do paperwork, but it would be city-designed, finance would look at it, legal would look at it, so it would be a lot less red tape and it probably would facilitate a quicker turnaround for them. So if we enacted these programs, we could put restrictions on them to say, well, we need more affordable housing in that area. So sale to households at or below 100% of the area median household income. Of course, this would help supplement home buyers with our home grants because if they are at 80% of the area median income for a household, then they would qualify for some of the home programming that we have for down payment assistance and first-time home buyers. Now, just to give you an example, a four-person household is $71,100 and that's 100% of the area median income.
So, I'm really interested in this, I'm sorry.
Sure.
So there's quite a few guys in town that are flipping homes. Can they themselves get involved in this or do they have to own the property first?
It would be however you would want the program set up. So if they wanted to purchase the property, they could do so, apply for the grant and/or loan and then just go through the programming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, we're getting into more of the apartment complex groups through about 25 properties within the NRS. I'm sorry, 33 rental properties in the NRS and this is multifamily housing. We could do a 20,000 exterior rehab, not get into the interior and the specific unit. It would be 0% interest, seven-year loan. And we could do up to 25 properties if we used again the $500,000, full $500,000 for this program. And then some of the smaller things that my programs can facilitate, but would be a lot easier for homeowners to deal with and not have to do contracts and all that fun stuff. Just a $5,000 landscaping grant for tree removal and there would be no recapture on those funds. And another idea that's been expressed throughout the commission is the need to design a walkable connection from downtown to English Park and design vistas from First Street to the Ohio River. So of course, we would have to engage a landscape architect for those features. And to give you an idea of what we are going to invest in, and this is just the 2020 budget. Like I said, there's about 3.8, we anticipate to invest about 3.8 million in federal funds. Of course, we draw admin from those funds. We do our new builds through our CHODO, our Community Housing Development Organization. We do a down payment assistance program, $5,000 through closing costs and our down payment assistance. We are doing home buyer education this year because we have to have them do a home buyer education course, so we're going to help supplement that $95 fee. And then home build, developer, city is the developer or habitat. So that's about $266,000 that we'll spend, be earmarked for next year. And that's home funds. And this is CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant Funds. I had slated a rental exterior rehab program, but like I said, with all the paperwork that they would have to go through and the funding matrix and they would have to do essentially a business plan and how they would do it, make the repairs. It would be cost prohibitive for them as well as take a lot of time for them. We are going to do existing homeowner exterior rehab, downspout removal with RWRA, RWRA removing the downspouts from the combined sewer system. A beautification grant, a safety grant. Of course, we draw admin and then we are doing commercial rehab. So say for instance, if you were able to do something with the rental properties, I could pull that money from the rental exterior rehab and divvy it up between the commercial and the homeowner portion. And that's all I have.
So where does this money come from? City Manager, please.
If you remember, there was a lot of discussion over the last few months about providing some local money to help with downtown and the Northwest areas. So in the current budget, we do have $500,000 available. And again, the idea was to have programs that would be easier to administer, easier for the residents or the homeowners or the investors to maybe help double down on some Northwest side improvements. And again, so the last couple of slides were intended to show how the local funds could potentially augment or complement the federal funds to where we could use local funds maybe for residential properties and then move the federal funds that are more complicated more to the commercial activities to where you help both, but then make it easier for private property owners essentially.
So will this fund be restricted to Northwest?
We can restrict it to whatever you'd like. We talked about it in terms of downtown Northwest was the general discussion prior to the budget.
That's what I thought I'd do. So somebody, okay.
And so again, these were just some initial concepts that Abby put together, four or five different options just to start a discussion about how to allocate or appropriate those funds.
So this is entirely different from that fund we started for rental assistance for low-income folks when COVID-19 started.
That was COVID-specific, right? So this is more Northwest-specific.
So where are we on that low-income rental assistance program with CBG grant money?
So as part of that funding, the $294,117 that we received, we did split it up between rental assistance and business, small business assistance. And in that programming, we had to put it into our consolidated plan. While we received our agreements, we executed those agreements and sent them back to HUD. But now apparently they're having a problem with their programming on their side, so it's...
Could you explain what that means?
Okay, so there's...
You don't have to be nice. Huh? Their software is not working right?
Well, we submit our plan through a program online and they pull it from the internet because obviously they're all working from home too. So they pull it down and what they're seeing on their side is different than what I submitted. So the budget, it's all backwards, yeah. So they're reviewing that. There's another city that's going through the same thing, so I don't know if it's just the luck of the draw that we got... Anyway, we're awaiting plan approval and we can't release funds or do any contracts until that happens.
So who is the contact person in Frankfurt for the HUD?
There's no contact in Frankfurt. It's the Louisville HUD that office that administers, yeah. Administers the federal side of it for us. So we answer to them, they review the plans and then recommend them for approval and that's just what we're waiting to do.
So we're actually waiting for Louisville's HUD...
The federal, the federal side of it.
Federal side of it in Louisville to fix their software so that we can all understand the same thing.
Yes, sir.
I was asked that question the other day when I was talking to somebody in DC. And I said, you know, "How do we get this thing moving a little bit? We've got this, you know, appropriated money from, you know, from the CARES Act, but we can't get moving." And so that's why I'm trying to find out who to get in touch with. Because they said, "Well, give me a name and we'll work on it."
Thank you.
It's whoever it is in Louisville's HUD.
Yes, and I can send that information along to you.
Okay, good, thank you. As part of that interview that CNN did with us, you know, and then I looked like a knucklehead saying, "Well, it's sitting there waiting to be approved." Okay, all right.
Abby, just a quick question on the city money. Someone invest, buy the property, invest, I believe the number was 15? They invest 15? City would invest 15? What is the, if they, what's it say, they do it, do a project rehab a home and that home is sold in 90 days? What portion do they pay back?
That would be up to you guys and then City Manager.
Hasn't been determined yet.
Yeah, has not been determined. It's just, if you want to make it a revolving loan fund, I would say 50%, suggest 50%. You could do 100% depending on the sale. You can do a portion of, you know, how much profit they make off of the sale. It just depends on how you guys want to structure that and then administering that. Or it could be a straight grant.
So exactly when you say downtown Owensboro, what area are you including in that? Are you going from River Park Center to Frazier or how are you deciding that area?
My NRS boundaries are from Walnut to Ewing and then from the river to the north side of Fifth Street.
That's a big spot.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Commissioner Condon.
Thank you, sir. Abby, as an update, I know that we were, you had sent out some and requested some information and RFPs on a new senior citizen center. Either development of the property or the building or a new one or whatever the case. We did not get anybody that responded correctly that to be able to get anything. Is that just simply on the back burner? Are we looking at anything else to do with that property and a new center or not? What are we doing, please?
We are exploring options at this point. I know the senior center is looking for ways to move out of that building if they can afford to do so. So we're just waiting, I think, for COVID to pass and things to get a little bit more normal if that will ever happen, to pursue that because of the funding mechanisms that a low-income housing investor would have to utilize to convert that property into low-income housing if that's the most viable option.
And to emphasize, that entire project is totally separate from everything you're presented here tonight.
Correct.
Totally, very good, thank you.
And the senior center wants to have someplace where they don't have to pay rent.
Correct.
That seems to be like the biggest problem, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And lower utility bills.
Commissioner Smith-Wright.
That's correct. When you're saying units, that's, those are individual homes, not...
Yes, single-family residential units. Yes, ma'am.
Anything you'd like to add, City Manager?
No, just interested in any feedback you might have.
It's hard to determine what's the greatest need in that whole area because there's such a great need in that whole area. So I'd be interested to see how that kind of plays out a little bit because I know it's a struggle and we have out-of-town guests. We want to take them downtown and you want to, you got to kind of dodge a few areas because bless their hearts. I mean, those folks are struggling as well and it's very difficult to kind of show us off when we have to show that too. So I hope that we can put this on the front burner to try and really push, since you're a Department of One still, is that correct?
Still, yes.
So that we can move with this because that could really be important for our growth. I appreciate your effort, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have one more call.
Why don't you all, yes, go right ahead, sir.
Well, this is Abby or Nate. Do you think it would be more advantageous just to take the area and make it city?
Get close to the mic, Jeff, please.
The city funds, would it be more advantageous to, since it's such a wide area, have a smaller area so when things are done, you can actually tell? Because if you spread it out so much, it's hard to see, make a difference. I think if you went from...
Prioritize it a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, because then when you see there's four or five in a row, oh, wow. And then you kind of notice that if they're all spread out, it's harder to see what happened. Is there a way to do that or...
I would say there is and it would just, we would have to create that boundary. I don't know what the sweet spot would be, obviously. It's high-density residential. And if you wanted to stick with properties that are maybe Second Street North or... I don't know if, and I don't know if that's even a fair thing to do. Yeah, it's something we can discuss.
Okay.
We have a lottery. Pull them out. You know, because you can tell where the efforts have been made when it's been, you know, emphasized by some of our other developments. You know, you can see house after house after house to Jeff's point, you know. And that's kind of what I would be looking at rather than one house here and then six blocks over, there's another house that needs to be fixed. Or I know it's difficult to do because you got to have compliance with the developer, everybody involved, but it just, I just think it has a bigger impact on what you're doing, obviously, and you know that as well as I do.
There's several pockets of vacant land and/or extreme blight areas that need to be taken care of. And I know I've spoken to several developers that are interested in taking advantage of a program like this and they're just waiting to jump on it. So I think once they start talking, people start talking, they'll get together and try to do blocks at a time, I would say, because of the value of the property in that area.
Would you mind just to give us a, whenever you get somebody interested, just throw us a little blurb and say, you know, "We've got something going on, yada, yada, yada."
Sure.
So we're out in the community and get kind of questioned about, "What are you going to do? What have you done for me lately?"
Right.
You know, so just give us a little blurb, say we've got an interested prospect, da-da-da-da-da, and just kind of keep us updated on that.
I will do.
If you please. Adrian will help you with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have a sanitation update ordinance, please, for Mr. Wayne Shelton, Public Works Director, who just signed on for five more years. Thank you, Wayne. Go right ahead.
It'll be all right until you see the bill.
You have to talk to Nate about that.
Mayor, Commissioners, this afternoon I'd like to review changes proposed to our current sanitation ordinance. Areas are being addressed with the goal of bringing the ordinance up to date to reflect technology changes, refine or expand on definitions, install a mechanism for enforcement activity and align the ordinance with past reorganization of Public Works. The 1995 sanitation ordinance placed a sanitation department under the Director of Sanitation. Changes in part reflect the reorganization under the Public Works umbrella, which created a position of Director of Public Works with a restructuring to departmental managers. The ordinance also provided for a means from which to fund sanitation services, basically creating a revenue fund. These ordinance revisions are based on changes in technology, ordinance enforcement and clarity for application. You know, now we have some high-density polyethylene dumpsters. The current ordinance also outlines what may constitute a violation, but it lacks in a means for enforcement. And then as an example, you'll see in the yard waste section that it specifies that a contractor must dispose of items cut by a contractor. These changes really clarify the definition of what is a contractor or constitutes a contractor. And yes, you'll see like in the definitions, they added the term code official, the individuals that allow to charge with enforcement of this ordinance. There's also some clarifications and reiterations in the proposed changes, such as totals or mobile containers. They remain the property of sanitation. You know, if you rent, move, or if you sell your home and move, that toter stays with that property. You know, each toter has a serial number and that serial number is designated to that location for assignment. So they're not personal property, they're sanitation property. Another clarification is that all trash must fit inside of the toter. You know, part of our rates are based on the volume of trash that toter itself holds. holds. You know, another issue is over, over full toters, when they go to empty them or tip them, all that loose trash or whatever can fall beside the truck and out into the truck, so that contributes to a litter issue. It also reiterates that trash that's placed on top of or in bags, whatever, beside the toters actually constitute a special load or special collection. One way to address those special loads or collection is that residential customers can take the large items or excess trash to the transfer station, no charge, using their OMU bill for identification. That doesn't apply to businesses or residential locations that operate a business from that Another change you'll see is that one of the, the regulation now says that toters to be removed from the curb on day of service, that this reinforces that. By placing a enforcement mechanism in, it actually sets a fine for that, if, you know, if after a visit from a sanitation manager or an official, and upon after an issue of notice of violation, if you are cited for that, that, that issue, then it imposes that you basically get a $50 ticket, you know. While these are few and far between, they are, I guess, repetitive and in certain neighborhoods, that is an issue. Repeated not out for service issues, charges being raised from $15 to $25, just to reflect the cost. Individuals should kind of be aware that when we service a location and we pull up and a toter's not out, the driver calls in that, that information to the sanitation dispatch, the location, the address, that's put into a computer system and maintain a record on file, so, you know, when that person calls up and says, oh, you missed my trash today, we know if we missed your trash or not. Here's, one of the things that is in an effort to help curb complaints is the special collection procedure. Now, an individual, when he puts out that recliner in front of his house, he's supposed to call in to sanitation and notify that there's a special collection at this location. That goes onto a list, and then when it's serviced, it gets picked up. Half the time, no one will call in, they just stick that recliner out the front door, or that mattress, or old couch, or whatever, and it sits there for two or three weeks. This change allows that on your day of service, if the driver pulls up in front of your house, there's a mattress laying there, then they can contact the sanitation dispatch, inform them that there is a mattress sitting there, they'll check the special collection list, and if it's not on it, they'll place it on there. This is basically making an implied contract that you set it out, and therefore you want me to pick it up. Hopefully, this will help cut down on some of the complaints for material set out for long periods of time on the curb line. It also expands from.
Hang on a second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith, right?
Thank you. Isn't there a charge for that?
Yes, there is. Basically, it's charged on a $15 for a, what's called pickup truckload. So if you're going to clean out a garage or whatever, then, you know, it may cost more than that, but, but yes, ma'am, there is, there is a fee for that.
Do you, do they call sanitation and ask for a special pickup?
Right, that's what they're supposed to do.
You just sit there for three weeks and finally decide to get it?
Some of the changes also expand on language, setting the time limit on residential demolition, material removal. You know, 98% of the houses are demolished in town or demolished by a contractor. Occasionally, we'll get an individual that selects or elacks to demolish the house themselves. You know, past experience has shown that we've had some that have been in this process for maybe three years. I won't mention Woodford Avenue, but, you know, we had a location there that carried on about four or five years to, to address before we got it resolved.
What avenue was that you're not going to mention?
Woodford.
Woodford, okay.
I thought you said Woodward.
You know, so, this, this is an attempt to, to place a limitation on the amount of time a demolition or a remodel project can throw stuff out in the yard and leave it. All right. It also reiterates, reinforces the fact that a commercial location that has a dumpster set, such I'll use the city hall here as an example, that the route to service that dumpster, from the time that sanitation truck leaves public right of way, to empty the dumpster to go back on the public right of way, is that property owner's responsibility. The pad where it sits is the property owner's responsibility. Maintenance of that pad or maintenance of an enclosure is the property owner's responsibility. So if we come in on your property and by repeated use of dumping at the same location year after year, it creates ruts or whatever in front of your dumpster, that is the property owner's issue to maintain. Another change that you'll see is that it allows the sanitation manager to actually set the date for the beginning of leaf season collection. You know, arbitrarily, or I guess past history's had it set at the end of September. Many times, it may be a week or two to three before the leaf fall actually occurs. So this allows some leniency or some latitude and actually establishing when we start that first pass. Clarification is that sanitation services are provided to city buildings and properties without restrictions or fees, simply a clarification. Part of the issue with the current ordinance is that it allows for penalties or whatever, but there's no enforcement mechanism. Changes here allow, use the property maintenance format, the notice of violations and citations to, for that enforcement process. Any appeal sent to the Public Works Director is processed, and if warranted, will be processed to Public or Property Maintenance Board to rule on appeal. This kind of highlights the, most of the changes that you'll see in the, in the ordinance, so be filled any questions you may have.
One question. How do you keep other people from dumping stuff in your dumpster that's not part of your commercial property? Is there some ordinance you can hold them till you all get there and give them a fine or anything?
There is actually an ordinance that addresses that. Part of it is you got to catch them.
Okay.
Sometimes it, you know, we have been known to go through trash in a dumpster, because people that throw out trash usually throw things that are identifying, so.
So there is an ordinance for somebody, I mean, it's better than putting a lock on it and everything, isn't it?
Well, some dumpsters do have locks on the, the side doors, but they're not on the, most of them do not have it on the top.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Mayor Dwight, interpret that to say that there are really no concerns with Wayne's proposed changes?
Good, I'm good.
If that's the case, it'll, it'll forward to a future commission meeting for first and second reading.
I agree 100%. Curious as to how come it took so long for that to happen. It looks pretty obvious to me. Okay, next item on the agenda is the city project list, and we'll call on city manager Nate Pagan, please.
We've had the opportunity to review the list, and we'll answer any questions you
I have no questions, anybody else? Off the hook? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn, could I have a second, please?
Second.
On the favor, any, but saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.